Okay, I'll call this meeting to order for Tuesday, June eighteenth. And we have attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council Jolly online. And we have a couple of registered speakers. One is, of course, our auditors. And then we also have Homeland Housing available to answer questions when we get to Agenda Item eight point four. But no one actually to speak at the beginning, so I'm just gonna skip over that. Oh, I need to motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Council Mackay. Go ahead.
Let the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. So now I will skip over presentations and business arising and go straight to the consent agenda. Council Brighthead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't see any.
No, it's all there still.
Okay. That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of June the fourth of twenty twenty four. Seven point one, standing committee of the whole item Langhome Disc Golf Assessment Update. Seven point two, Standing Committee of the Whole Item Volunteer Opportunity Awareness Initiatives and/or Programs. Seven point three, Standing Committee of the Whole Item Debt Management Policy, CFS oh three. Eight point three, twenty twenty three Service Place Financial Report. And eight point five, twenty twenty six Tran zero zero one Transit Bus Funding Increase.
Mayor, can we remove eight point three? I'm sorry, Council. Can can we remove eight point three?
Which is eight point three?
It's first place financial report.
For voting or what?
For I have questions as well.
Okay.
So eight point three is out?
Yeah, yeah. We try to get those ahead of us.
Yeah, I just slipped my mind. I'm sorry.
All right, call for the vote other than eight point three.
As amended then?
Well, just take eight.
Or just removing eight point three?
We'll just remove eight point three.
Good.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, let's see how this works now. So the next on our agenda it will is minutes were just approved on consent for June fourth, two thousand and twenty four. We also approved. Sorry. A motion on consent that is from committee. So the recommendation was that ninety four thousand be funded from the Capital Reserve. Be approved to convert the temporary disc golf course at Langhome Park into a permanent disc golf course. Approved on consent. Seven point two was approved on consent and the motion read that administration should take no further work on motion C twenty three dash thirty one, which was the volunteer opportunity awareness initiatives. Talked about at committee. And seven point three was approved on consent. Which was the approval of our new debt management policy. Um, and then now we're on to eight point one. So this is our auditor's year end communication. Time specific for one fifteen as I as I thought it's earlier. Are they online with us?
Yes, they are.
Yes. Yes, awesome. That just makes my life so much easier. So we have Sheldon Jacobs, who is with KPMG. Sheldon, thank you for joining us and thank you for being a bit earlier than we thought. And do you have anyone with you? Yeah, Brittany.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I do. I have my colleague Brittany Kealan with me.
All right, I will let you do your presentation whenever you're ready.
Sure, thank you. And unfortunately, I was going to take the the few minutes before one fifteen to set up my camera appropriately. And unfortunately, the way it's set up, now you're looking at the top of my head, but um, I do apologize for that. So good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like I said, my colleague Brittany Kealan is with me today. And we're here to present our audit findings report for the consolidated financial statements of the city for December thirty one, twenty twenty three. Our audit findings have been presented or provided to you previously in your council package. So what we'll do today is we'll touch on the high points during the course of our presentation. But before I go through the presentation, I would like to take this opportunity to thank administration for their work and their efforts throughout the course of the reporting period to bring together the draft financial statements and also to assist us with bringing completion to our audit. So with that, we will look to the highlights of our audit, which we've got up on the screen. So I'll briefly touch on some of the key points that we have here on the screen. So first of all, the status of our audit, we are substantially complete our audit as of today. There are a couple of remaining items that we are what that we need to deal with, which I'll speak to on the next slide. A few other items I'd like to talk to on this page is we did have a change to our audit plan since I presented our audit plan to council back in October. During the course of the audit, we did identify that there was an unrecorded employee future benefit obligation associated with sick leave. That matter did require additional audit attention and also required the assistance by an actuary to assist management with calculating that obligation. And as a result of this matter and the additional work that was required, the the timeline to complete the financial statements and our audit was protracted. Going on to the sort of the left hand column at the bottom. We're going to speak briefly to the concept of asset retirement obligations. This was something I spoke to council about in October. In twenty twenty three, there was a number of new accounting standards that were applicable for all municipalities across Canada. The most significant of which was the asset retirement obligation standard, which did impact the city of St. Albert. So we'll we'll talk to that too as we go through this presentation. There are a couple of items that we came across during the course of the audit relating to payroll accounting, including the sick leave liability that we deem to be misstatements resulting from our audit efforts, and I'll touch on those. And then to wrap things up, there are a couple of improve internal improvement processes that have been or are being made by administration, which we'll touch on to near the end of our presentation. So moving on to the next slide. As I mentioned, we are substantially complete our audit of the consolidated financial statements. The only couple of things we have remaining is a standard in our industry is we get what we call a management representation letter from management, which basically is a written representation from management that the administration and those associated with the city have fully cooperated with our audit and they take full responsibility for the financial statements. And then ultimately obtaining evidence that council has approved the financial statements, which we expect to occur in this meeting this afternoon. There are four other audit engagements we have in which we've previously reported to council. One being the audit of the financial statements of the St. Albert Public Library Board. We're meeting with the library board tomorrow to have those financial statements approved and that audit wrapped up. The other three audits are basically audits of financial schedules and are prepared for compliance purposes. At this point in time, those audits are either complete or near completion. And there are no matters to date to report to council, and we anticipate that the audits will be complete without any any issues. Moving on to the next couple of pages, where we talk about the asset retirement standard, that's that new accounting standard that again, all municipalities have implemented or are implementing for fiscal twenty twenty three. In this standard, just as a reminder, this is where municipalities are now required to account for costs associated with retiring an asset during the life of the asset as opposed to at the end of the life of the asset. So historically, and I would say probably the most famous example now is asbestos abatement. So at the at the end of the life of a building, a municipality would have to abate the asbestos in a building before it was demolished. Historically, that cost would be incurred when the actual abatement activities occurred. Now, under the new accounting standards, activities such as asbestos abatement or any other costs associated with retiring an asset have to be estimated. They have to be, they did not have to, but they're generally present value to today, and the cost is basically apportioned over the life of an asset as opposed to being recorded as an expense all at the end of the life of an asset. So in any fiscal period going forward, any significant asset retirement obligations will be recorded as expenses in a reasonable and systematic fashion in increments in every year over the life of the asset. So basically, what happens is that cost is really tagged to the usage of the asset and not only just to the year in which the actual activities have incurred. So management has worked through that standard in the course of this year's audit and in advance of this year's audit. Part of that exercise require required engaging third party consultants to assist with estimating and determining the cost of asset retirement costs. You do need the specialized skills of engineers and others who understand the costing and the activities associated with end of life activities. So those were specialists that were engaged by by administration. And during the course of our audit, we did review any of the reports that were that were obtained by administration to support the accounting for the asset obligations. We did have one observation that we noted during the course of our audit and that in the modeling that was used to determine the asset obligations, certain of the dates associated when the the actual retirement costs would be incurred did not necessarily line up when with exactly when the activities are most likely to occur. So there were some differences there. The differences were not significant. We did some what we call sensitivity analysis and altered some of the dates in our own independent testing and and any of the changes to any of the dates would not have been material to the amounts that have been recorded in the financial statements. So for all intents and purposes, that standard has now been fully implemented in these financial statements. The implementation of the standard also required the comparative financial statements for twenty twenty two to also be restated to include the asset obligations on a historical basis. Moving forward to the next slide. As I touched on briefly in my opening comments, it was identified that and I believe council is also now aware that there's been a change associated with the accounting for sick leave obligations. So historically, the city would account for a sick leave obligation in the year or in the period in which employee was actually ill and actually took the leave. The accounting standards actually require that cost to be estimated and accounted for an expense as this as employees earn the benefits. So we've now moved from a model of recording the expense when it's actually incurred to when the benefit is actually earned. So all the employees that are entitled to sick sick leave benefits will accumulate so many hours every year based on providing services to the city and and an actuary was engaged to estimate what that liability would be and determine a liability that would respect respect and also reflect what the future usage of the sick leave program will be in future periods. So that obligation was determined to be at the end of December, twenty twenty three, approximately four point five million dollars. It's an obligation that theoretically should have been accrued over the last couple of decades. But it's been now determined and has been recorded in its entirety all through fiscal twenty twenty three. The amount itself was determined not to be material to the financial statements. And we've looked historically back and believe that the fact that the amounts were not accrued in prior years would not have been material to pass financial statements as well. So recording the amount entirely in fiscal twenty twenty three does not have an impact on our on our auditor's report. And this amount is now been recorded in the financial statements and will be adjusted annually going forward. During the course of an audit, we accumulate any misstatements that we identify in financial statements. And during the course of this year's audit, we did uncover two items and both of them are in respect to compensation expense and basically estimating compensation expense that's expected to be paid in the future, but theoretically should be accounted for currently. So on the next page, we do note these two items. The first one relates to the sick leave liability. And as I previously had mentioned, theoretically, that liability should have been recorded in prior years and not all through fiscal twenty twenty three. The other liability that we recorded associated with future compensation costs again should have been actually recorded in twenty twenty three. At this point in time, will likely be recorded in future periods. Both of these amounts individually are not material to the financial statements. And it just so happens to be and it's coincidental that both of them go in opposite directions. So on a net basis, the net impact would be an increase to the surplus of the city's operations this year of roughly a million dollars, which again, on a net combined basis, was determined not to be material to the financial statements of the city. So other than that, those were the only the two items that we did discoverage in the course of our audit that we we bring to attention of council. At this point, I'd like to pass over the remainder of our presentation to my colleague Brittany.
Great. Thank you, Sheldon, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. On page eleven, we speak to the concept of control deficiencies and define that a control deficiency is a control or a lack of control that does not allow management to prevent or detect misstatements. So with that, we'd like to speak to a couple of observations we identified during the audit. The first relates to the two unrecorded liabilities associated with payroll accounting that Sheldon has just spoken to. And typically, when a misstatement is identified, a control deficiency also exists. And so as a result of these two misstatements, we have a recommendation that the city review its practices in place for identifying and recognizing such liabilities. The next observation is one that has been carried forward for several years. So in the past, the city was not provided with costing information from developers when capital assets were contributed to the city. And over the last several years, they've been working with developers in order to get this information. So in twenty twenty three, they they had fully implemented the process of getting the information from developers, but continued to use their previous methodology where they used a reasonable proxy based on historical costs to record the capital assets. So in twenty twenty four, we expect the city to have updated its accounting practices such that the actual costs as submitted by developers are used. Page fourteen here discusses a number of new accounting standards that were applicable in twenty twenty three, and these are consistent with our audit plan. So each of these were reviewed and implemented by administration. And the most significant standard is the asset retirement obligation standard, which which Sheldon has already discussed throughout our report. Certain of the other standards had an impact on the financial statements. And we worked with administration to evaluate that the accounting and or disclosures related to these have been appropriately updated within the financial statements. For the most part, the standards didn't result in significant changes and in some cases had had no impact at all to the financial statements. A report also includes a number of appendices. So first, our copy of our auditor's report is attached. And this is a clean audit opinion, which is consistent with previous years. But you might notice that our report differs this year compared to previous years. And this is due to the fact that the adoption of the asset retirement obligation standard required administration to restate the comparative figures. So our report draws attention to that restatement and also says that we audited the adjustments to those comparative figures. The appendices also include a copy of the draft management representation letter, which we expect to be signed today. And then lastly, we have included some thought leadership materials on new accounting standards, KPMG's audit quality and other insights that might be of interest to council. So that concludes our formal presentation. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city of St. Albert as your external auditors this year and are pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you to both of you. I would say just a little bit more complicated in the past, but it's really not that bad. I will open it up to council for questions. Council Killer, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, Mr. Jacobs. With regard to the the sick leave liability, does this similar to the analysis that we would do on any liability for unused and carried over vacation? Is that kind of the similar thing that we would? Or is that the the carried over vacation? Is that something that we already look at in the audit?
Yes, it's a similar concept. Vacation liability has been accrued and recognized in in the financial statements historically. The difference with the sick leave liability is vacation liability is usually taken over a shorter period of time. So you usually take it within the year you earn it or or typically in most organizations, you get you have a short carryover period. With sick leave liability, you have the ability to utilize the sick leave that you earn over an extended period of time, over any point in time in the future as you remain an employee with the municipality. So the only difference I would say is there's some complexities associated with measuring the sick leave obligation because of the extended period of time over which an employee could take the benefit, but conceptually, the concepts are similar.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Seeing no questions, we have a motion in front of us. There's actually two of them. Does anyone want to make it? Counsel Promansky, go ahead. Oh, Counsel Broad got there. Doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Okay. I saw Council Mackay's name up before too, so I wasn't sure.
Go ahead, Counsel Promansky.
Recommended motions that the report entitled City of St. Albert Final Twenty Twenty Three Audit Findings Report provided as an attachment to the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four Agenda Report entitled Auditor's Year End Communication be received as information. And number two, that administration provide a status update on the audit recommendations is outlined in the report entitled City of St. Albert Final Twenty Twenty Three Audit Findings Report at the Standing Committee of the Hall in October, twenty twenty four.
Perfect. Before I accept that, I just want to give council an opportunity. Do does anyone on council see a need to go in camera with the auditors? Should I always try to ask that question? But seeing none. Okay, I'll accept the motions. Counsel Promansky, go ahead.
Thank you. My only comment for this is I believe the report is very thorough and presented to council very well. So I'm appreciated of the appreciative of the people that were involved in this and finding those fine little details which your experts at. So again, thank you. And we look forward to using this information well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed and that's unanimous. So thank you both for joining us and we look forward to continuing relationship with KPMG. We are eight point two, which is the audited final statements and year and annual report. So Mr. Fletcher's got a presentation for us.
Yes, I do worship. Thank you. Showing my screen. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Obviously, today I'm going to present the highlights of the twenty twenty three Annual Corporate Report. As you know, the annual report is a submission due to the Government Financial Officers Association, GFOA, and required by the Municipal Government Act. The annual report, the specific report, provides an overview of the city's corporate and financial accomplishments throughout the year. The presentation over the next couple of minutes will really focus on some key highlights. Maybe not. There we go. The advancements of our key priorities over a four year corporate business plan align with your strategic plan and organizational excellence priorities. Our efforts improve operational efficiencies, advance major initiatives and enhance financial sustainability while optimizing resources and adding capacity in key service areas to ensure the maintenance of high quality service delivery. I'm very proud of the work that we've accomplished over the course of the last year to advance the corporate business plan and to continue delivering excellent services to the community. Apologies. This presentation has been broken down into three broad components, service delivery highlights, moving into your strategic plan highlights, and then ultimately I'll turn it over to Ms. Stella Tam to talk about the audited consolidated financial statements. Over the next few slides, I'll provide a few core service delivery highlights. They're grouped thematically, and then there's one slide at the end is a bit of a catchall. And frankly, those are just some stats that I think we can use to collectively brag about the service delivery of the city. St. Albertans continue to be well served by their staff. Looking at land and economic development, focusing in on permitting. In twenty twenty three, the total number of permits issued slightly decreased in comparison to twenty twenty two. However, the development is still going strong in St. Albert with over five thousand, six hundred permits issued in twenty twenty three. These fluctuations are normal over the course of development and still show strength and confidence in the growth of St. Albert. Focusing on the left hand side of the slide and assessment growth, assessment increased from twenty twenty two to two point two four percent in twenty twenty three, due in part to increased non residential development in St. Albert. The city remains committed to the health and well being of our residents and continues to work with the government of Alberta and community agencies to provide support and resources to residents. Some of these programs I'd like to highlight include the subsidy program. This program supports low income individuals and families in participating in city recreation facilities and programs, as well as local and commuter transit services. For the last year in twenty twenty three, two thousand, four hundred and seventy eight St. Albert residents accessed the subsidy programs. This represents a fifty percent increase in comparison to twenty twenty two, where one thousand, six hundred and fifty six residents accessed the subsidy programs. As we look forward into why the whys of this increase, the Community Social Needs Assessment, and combined with the census will help us determine the cause. Mental health education. In twenty twenty three, safe talk and mental health first aid continue to be programs highly valued by our community. In twenty twenty three, Mental Wellness Working Table, consisting of many local nonprofits and social serving agencies, collaborated to increase the awareness of support and resources for our residents, including an inclusion lens. Our team also supported the rollout of Moosehide Campaign for all city staff. This campaign honors and respects and protects women and children from violence. Life can be hard. This is a mental health campaign that was launched to increase awareness of the resources and supports available to residents in need. This included access to helplines and resources available for support twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. Focusing in on the environment, as we look at our waste diversion, the city does its best to divert waste from landfill through organic waste diversion and recycling programs and also provides a centralized site where residents can bring yard waste, recyclables and hazardous materials. In twenty twenty three, landfill diversion rates saw a notable improvement from the over the course of the year from Q one to Q three, indicating an effective increase in waste diversion efforts. Challenges related to contamination affected winter diversion rates, but overall waste diversion rates are not concerning. And as a total, eight thousand, nine hundred megatons of garbage were collected. Seven thousand, six hundred and fifty megatons of organics were collected. And which represent rather an eleven and twenty three percent increase over twenty twenty two respectively. As we look at environmental programming, the city coordinates annual programming opportunities to encourage community environmental stewardship and conservation. In twenty twenty three, St. Albert residents had the opportunity to participate in a number of programs, including the Clean and Green River Fest, Partners in Parks, Weed Warrior Events, a rain barrel sale, Bike Month, which included free Bike Month tune ups, community tree planting and neighborhood and school cleanups. Some of these events are organized in conjunction with community sponsors such as River Fest, which saw one hundred and eighty eight participants contributing to the cleanup of the river valley, as well as assisting in the planting of three hundred and nine native shrubs and trees. In twenty twenty three, the Arden Theater drew eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty five more people to St. Albert and our downtown core compared to twenty twenty two and is starting to return to pre pandemic numbers, which is very encouraging. Of note, as well as the forty second, as well, rather, was the forty second Children's Festival that returned from June first to fourth in twenty twenty three, selling over eighteen thousand tickets. The twenty twenty three festival was made possible with the help of three hundred and twenty four volunteers who donated their time over the course of the four day festival with a total of about three thousand, four hundred volunteer hours between them. Finally, Dedalim Luminarium, a public art initiative supported by the Arts Development Advisory Committee, featured a fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty two square foot inflatable structure by UK Design Team Architects of Air, and this was installed in Lions Park. This immersive maze of color, shape and light attracted five thousand visitors who experienced its unique and engaging environment. On the recreation side, participation numbers are increased. On the recreation side, participation numbers are increasing for all recreation programming other than aquatics. The aquatics, as would be intuitive, numbers were affected by the renovation closure of Fountain Park Recreation Center. The city is proud of the completion of the Grey Nunns White Spruce Park, which has won multiple awards, including the KAMA Award for Environmental Leadership and Sustainability in May of last year. This park created the practice of integrated art in the city by integrating public art into the infrastructure of the park itself. And it included the creation of four kilometers of trails, outdoor classrooms, two viewpoints, and a nature-based play area. Finally, as we look at the bragging slide, there's some statistics to note. 2,815 licensed businesses in 2023 in St. Albert. 1,573 potholes filled. Five that there's still more to go. 5,214 trees and shrubs planted during naturalization events over the course of the year. A total, though we total kilometers of trails plowed, so that's not total kilometers of trails, but over repeated plowings equaled 2,280 kilometers of plowed trails. 5,200, or sorry, 529 hectares are mowed every two weeks, and five kilometers of sidewalks were replaced or repaired, and I think it's sidewalk, not sidewalk. Five kilometers of sidewalks were replaced or repaired. Focusing in on the second component of the presentation, we'll now focus on progress made over the course of the business plan to achieve your strategic plan. In 2023, we began with 47 projects planned to advance. By the end of 2023, our current status is 19 completed. 13 are on progress or on track, five are delayed but in progress, and 10 projects were delayed such that they're scheduled to start into 2024 and 2025. We've taken the opportunity to rationalize, prioritize, and sequence projects to ensure efforts are focused on your top priority projects. Over the next slide, I'll provide a very brief overview of each strategic priority and highlight some of the initiatives. Economic prosperity, supported an investment-positive environment that encourages economic growth and the development of new and existing sectors. Some of the highlights, the Green Tape 2.0 initiative was completed and improved, though in point of fact, we are always seeking to find efficiencies in terms of our processes. The development of key planning documents, including the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan and various technical studies, is advancing. First reading has occurred, and a public hearing for St. Albert West ASP will occur later this year. The city is finalizing servicing costs for the Lakeview Business District. The decision is set to be made this year. Business attraction and retention efforts focused on citywide, but also included Lakeview opportunities, are meeting with success. Priority two, your downtown vibrancy, which is a reminder seeks to foster a downtown where people come to live, gather, celebrate, shop, and do business. The update and reprioritization of the downtown area redevelopment plan was completed, evolving the dark to reflect today's realities and position the plan for relevance in the coming years. The Business Improvement Area was formed, and the Downtown Business Association held its first annual general meeting in November of 2023, discussing revenue, expenditure estimates for 2024, and electing five board members, looking forward to their activities in 2024. Administration and council conducted deliberate targeted advocacy in support of 22 St. Thomas Homeland Housing Projects. Community well-being, responding to changing demographics, accommodating the diverse needs of residents, and continuing to foster an inclusive community where everyone has an opportunity to feel to fully participate and feel welcomed. This includes communicating, engaging, and meaningful and transparent ways with the community. In 2023, preliminary designs for a mixed-market housing project were reviewed in compliance for compliance with city policies, and feedback was given to Homeland Housing and the architect. Phase one of the youth transitional housing project, including a feasibility study and external stakeholder engagements with youth and youth-serving agencies, was complete. On a related note, our housing needs assessment is ongoing, as are regional discussions on housing to support the continued growth of the entire metropolitan region. The municipal naming policy was revised in 2023 to guide the naming of municipal assets. Adapting to a changing natural environment, this seeks to build resiliency that allows the city to prepare for and respond to climate change and ensure the vitality of our land, river, natural resources, and resilient infrastructure for future generations. The development of a waste minimization strategy was complete and presented to Standing Council of the Hall on 9th of May, 2023. Importantly, the green environment strategy was successfully shared with council on the 4th of December 23, and the implementation plan is ongoing. Updated flood mapping was incorporated into all our plans and policies. And the final climate risk and vulnerability assessment report was unanimously approved unanimously approved by the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board on the 14th of December, 2023, which will help St. Albert's in planning efforts going forward. Finally, as we look at financial sustainability, where we ensure responsible and transparent fiscal management, decision-making, and long-term financial sustainability that allows the city to respond to changes to revenue sources. The city finished an updated work plan, policy mapping, and initiated a debt strategy video for publication in fall of 2023. Work on our debt policy to inform a strategy is maturing, and obviously, the updated policy was approved by council today on consent. The Arden Theater's operating model review phase one was complete and will be presented to council in the coming weeks. And on June 20, June 2023, city council determined that in light of new information, CASA would not outsource secondary public safety answering point and fire dispatch services. To date, 36 procurement processes have been documented as part of the procurement audit and recommendations implementation project. This concludes my portion of the briefing, and I will now turn it over to Stella Tam, Financial Operations Controller, who will take you through the 2023 audited consolidated financial statements. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm here this afternoon to present the 2023 audited consolidated financial statements, which are included in the annual report along with supporting notes and schedules. These consolidated statements include the city operations, its utilities, the library, and the Arts and Heritage Foundation. The city's financial position in 2023 remains strong with net financial assets at 77 million. These net assets consist of the city's financial assets of 274.2 million, less its liabilities of 196.8 million. The city also has non-financial assets, which include tangible capital assets, prepaid, and inventories of materials and supplies totaling just over 1 billion. This has resulted in an accumulated surplus or municipal equity of 1.4 billion. This accumulated surplus is not operating surplus, but an accumulation of the city's assets over time. I will break this down a little more in the next few slides. In 2023, the city's financial assets increased slightly by half a million from 2022 as a result of an increase in investments by 15.8 million, an increase of accounts receivable of 3.4 million, and offset by a decrease in cash and cash equivalents by 18.6 million. The increase in investments and decrease in cash is due to an additional 5 million added to the long-term investment portfolio in the year, and the remainder is due to a reallocation of cash to short-term investments. This slide shows a more detailed breakdown of our cash and investments. 29 million sitting in the zero to 90 days, which consists mainly of cash and cash equivalents. Cash equivalents are made up of high-interest savings accounts and investment accounts. There is 76 million in short-term investments in the 181-days-to-three-years term, and 150 million in our long-term bond portfolios, which range from three to 10 years. The city staggers the investment maturities to ensure cash availability for both short- and long-term cash needs. Our short-term investment average rates range from 1.2% to 6.35%, while long-term investments average rates range from 1.55% to 5.79%. On the liability side, we had 197 million, which is a 13.9 million increase from 2022, due to the following. Accounts payable and accrued liabilities increased by 17.7 million, due mostly to timing of vendor payments and the one-time accounting accrual adjustment of the employee future benefits. Long-term debt change was not material at 0.8 million. More on the next slide on that one. Deferred revenue decreased by 2.8 million due to the timing of MSI-funded capital projects. Our long-term debt totals 90.5 million at the end of 2023. In the past year, we took out new debt of 9 million for the following two projects. Villanue Road rebuild of 5 million and North St. Albert Trail for 4 million. Our current debt limit for 2023 is 343 million, and we have only used 91 million. That's 26% of the provincial limit. The debt limit refers to the maximum amount of municipality can borrow. Debt service limit is 57 million, and we only have only used 13 million, which is 23% of the provincial limit. Debt servicing limit is the maximum annual debt payment, including principal and interest for 2023. Now over to the city's non-financial assets, which increased by 74.1 million from 2022. This increase is largely due to the increase in tangible capital assets or TCA. The majority of the TCA balance is made up of buildings, engineered structures, and land. The main categories that make up the increase are as follows. Building improvements increased by 14.1 million due to the fountain park renovations. Engineered structures increased from 2022 by 62.8 million. This was from developer contributed assets of 33 million for Riverside Developments, Northridge, Aaron Ridge North, and Sherret. In addition, 5.3 million for North St. Albert Trail and 3.7 million for Villanue Road Rebuild. Land improvement increased by 6.9 million due to developments such as North St. Albert Trail of 1.4 million, Larry Alexic Field Turf of 1 million, and neighborhood parks and paved parking lots. Overall, the city's accumulated surplus on municipal equity increased by 60.7 million from 2022 to 2023. The majority of accumulated surplus is made up of just over a billion in equity and TCA. This is your tangible capital assets, less depreciation, less debt. 178 million in reserves. These reserves include both operating and capital reserves. The statement of operations and accumulated surplus shows the city's revenues and expenses on a consolidated basis. The top portion of the statement focuses on the consolidated operating revenues and expenses of the city, which resulted in an annual deficit before capital revenue of 3.1 million. Adding in the city's capital revenue, which was 63.8 million, which includes the contributed TCA, developer contributions, and levies, and capital government transfers. Contributed TCA are assets donated to the city from developers such as land, roads, and utilities. Some of the more significant capital revenue received was the MSI of 8.8 million, which is the Municipal Sustainability Initiative, the Canada Community Building Fund, CCBS, of 7 million, and Investing in Canada Infrastructure of 2 million. This resulted in an annual surplus of 60.7 million. This annual surplus is different than the operating surplus, as it includes capital revenue and non-cash items, which includes amortization and contributed assets, as well as consolidation of the library and Arts and Heritage Foundation financial results. In conclusion, the city ended 2023 in a strong financial position due to being fiscally responsible and proactive to reduce expenditures and address reduced revenues. More detailed now variants and explanations on the functional departments can be found in the fourth-quarter report that was presented to council on February 13. And this now concludes my presentation, and I will take any questions.
Awesome. Good job, both of you. I'll open it up to questions. When you were showing the bragging points, Mr. Fletcher, you talked about 500 and some square hectare, sorry, of mulled grass. I don't know if you watched the news this morning. But Edmonton was struggling, and I don't know what we do different. I think it's just that we have a service level that we stick to, and we budget accordingly. I just feel like good job. And we are growing, and we have limited money, but those service levels are stuck too, so thanks for that. I'll open it up to questions. Go ahead. If you would make shorter reports and just leave us hanging, then maybe we could ask some questions. No, it's all good. So this is getting submitted to the the GOA, this whole report? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, cool. All right, I see. No questions. So good, good job. Go ahead, Counselor Mackay. I'm just looking. Oh, you have a question? You want to make the motion? Oh. Go ahead.
First, a comment and then maybe the motion. You know, we've we've spent less than 30 minutes, maybe 35 minutes talking about a whole year's worth of service delivery to our residents. It in a way, it it doesn't seem fair. I would, I think we we kind of underestimate the huge amount of work that every that that this 30 some odd minutes reflects every employee's contribution throughout the year, both the financial audited statements and all of the work that's reported in the annual report here is just an understatement of of the contribution that is made by every employee throughout every day of the year, and and I truly mean every day of the year. The the city is open 20, literally 24 hours a day, seven days a week, either clearing snow, cutting grass, picking up garbage, having the pool open, et cetera, et cetera. So, Mr. Fletcher, to you and every employee in St. Albert, congratulations. Great year, great report, and and most of all, a great contribution to every resident in the city. When you think of this corporation as
I'm just going to interrupt you one sec, Mr. Killig. Why don't you make the motion and use this as your debate?
Okay.
Perfect.
Yep. That the city's 2023 annual report, including the audited consolidated financial statements for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2023, be approved.
Awesome. Sorry to interrupt a wholeheartedly. Keep going.
Yeah, so i- in closing, I just would like to recognize that the work of everyone, it doesn't happen just on this day when we send in a report. It happens every day of the year that leads us to be able to have this type of a good financial audited report as well as year-end report. And when you think of it, we we are a $1.3 billion corporation. People don't recognize that. It's a, it's a very significant number. 22, 222 million-dollar operating revenue, again, a very significant number. And I, I, again, I just would like to say thank you to every everyone on the exec team, admin team, and all the staff that have made this this possible for for last year. Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else on debate or comments? How is this kind of released publicly? I guess I could ask that earlier. Is there anything public, or is it just go to the GOA?
Yeah, we we post the report on the website, and you know, and I think part and parcel of our communications will be throughout the year highlighting some of those key elements. My brag slide is an example, right? Just to put it in context for people.
Okay, perfect. All right, seeing nothing else, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that's unanimous. Okay, I think the Service Place report was next. There is no presentation, so I'll go straight to you, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. Let me just get over to that spot. Okay, so I had a few questions about it. So just for clarity, this this report's still a lot more brief than I was expecting. And I think I've discussed this several times. I was hoping for more detail every time it comes forward, and it seems to be a similar level of detail every year. So, that being said, so we looked at the the difference between 2023 and 2024 estimated expenses. And we have a 142 million or 142,000 difference in the material and goods. I'm just wondering if you can expand on that.
Absolutely, Counselor. Danielle Podlobny should be coming. There she is. I will defer to her. Thank you.
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, I'd be happy to give you that information. So on materials side, we found that we were was more related to chemicals in the pool. There was a cost increase we experienced on pool chemicals within Service Place. There was some pieces around programs. So the more programs we offered, we were over on our revenue, but that also means that they'll come within some ancillary costs, staffing and supplies that then increased that amount as well. And there was some also some default payments that were covered off within that amount as well. So it's it's some general repair, maintenance, chemicals to the pool, some additional program expenses that came from the additional programs offered.
Okay, thank you. And the also the decrease in the contract and general services by 85,000. What was the impetus for? Do we just overestimate, or how did we come down with that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes. So every year, we look at the work that we need, we're required to do. So we we took a look at the contract, and some of those were able to be managed within within our existing staff. So it depends on the staff that we have and their skill set aligned to that process. There's also sometimes capacity within our public operations team that we can collaborate with them on some work within the facility as well, if they have some availability of their contractors, so that sometimes can reduce our cost as well. So that when there is cost savings, we look for those opportunities to reduce costs and So that sometimes can reduce our cost as well. So that when there is cost savings, we look for those opportunities to reduce costs in operations. Um, and then we can use those to offset the cost of the facility as well.
And so that's what happened with this situation? It was multiple factors?
Correct.
Okay, and then when it just, the transfers to from corporations capital, just trying to figure out as a layman, what, may not be you, to explain exactly, um, so we were anticipating eight hundred and eight two thousand and we had nine hundreds, oh, maybe they said no, uh, nine hundred and fifty three thousand. I'm just, what were we transferring? What were we planning? What was the reason for that?
Maybe I'll take a first stab at this and then if, if Ms. Victor wants to add in, she can feel free. So there is a service agreement where public operations maintains our arenas. So it's part of their arena portfolio in terms of how they take care of our arenas. They flood the ice surfaces, they maintain the surfaces. Um, they do some maintenance of the facility as well. And so what we do is an internal transfer to public operations to pay for that service through their department. And then they align all of the arena operations corporately for the city. So that overage would just reflect um potential increases in salaries to the, to the unionized staff that are providing that service. It could be an overtime situation where we had a couple of staff maybe um incurring some overtime throughout the facility's operation, which happens when we have staff that are away or something of that nature. So it's just, it's a transfer to our public operations team for the maintenance of the arenas.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So that way, not just a, a gift and kind without any record behind it. So the other question I had is, so we're anticipating, we, we, um, first of all, I, I appreciate the deficit was significantly less than what we were anticipating it for to be in two thousand and twenty three. We, there were two point two anticipated and down to one point six actual. But we're anticipating this year to be a one point eight million. So I'm just wondering, I realize it's a better anticipation than what we had for the previous year. However, it's still higher than the actual. So what was the thought process behind having it be? Why are we higher than what we actually were able to achieve last year?
So through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, when we build our budget, we build it in quarter one and quarter two of the previous year that we're actually implementing for. So with the information we have at that time, that's how we built the budget with a one point eight million dollar deficit. Now, at this time, we know that we came in at one point six um for two thousand and twenty three. Is a part of the um final budget approvals, we did um have a fifty thousand dollar enhancement to the revenue expectations at that point. So we're now looking at a one point seven five is our um offset. And then we continue to track through forecasting. So it's really a forecasting exercise. Um, and as we watch, continue to watch patterns of usage at the facility, um, then we uh participate in the corporate forecasting and make any changes or revisions to um revenue or expenditures through the year.
Okay, so do we have an idea for why we're forecasting higher? Like, I understand we always kind of go a little bit more conservative. Like, we don't always say, okay, we did this, we can do it again. But are we? I guess, what did we think was different between last year and this year that would make us think that we would not do as well this year as last year?
So we base our budget off of actual um dollar values with staff. Um, we base it off of what we are planning for work that year um at the facility. Um, we base our budget knowing that we have a full staff complement. Um, sometimes at that point, if we have a reduced reduction in staffing through attrition or somebody has left the corporation, we may need to defer a couple of projects. Weather is a factor in our operations too, which seems kind of funny for an indoor facility. But if it's really hot outside, we may not need to have as many staff in the facilities. We can downscale the staffing. So we'll make revisions and tweaks throughout the year at the facility to um be as economically efficient as we can as well. Um, and so we just capture that through forecasting as we need to make changes, we continue to revise and, and slim down our, our forecasting. We're also still finding the, the, the pattern of usage after the pandemic. So I think we're getting a little bit cleaner where we're seeing the, the um major increases we saw in membership and such are now starting to level up a little bit. So we're just continuing to watch what that looks like from a revenue perspective at the facility.
And so you said that we're at one point seven five as a projected deficit, but here it says one point eight. I know we're just like rounding. Are we still on track at this point? I know we're like, because when you give us, it's back three months ago. So are we still on track to be able to maintain that for this year?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, um, from our, our expectations at Q one forecast, we are still on track to meet that one point seven five. Um, what we will continue to do is track the usage, track the patterns, um, track the revenue and the expenditures. And we will continue to update the forecast as we work through the uh, the annual forecasting process.
Okay, that's it for questions. I can bring forward the motion if.
I've got one more question. Actually, it's processed and it's maybe for ledge. Um, as you know, I've been trying to take away the stuff that we receive for information. Cause I, you know, recently took a course on good governance and we can't theoretically put anything on an agenda that you can vote against. Right? Bardo, you and I talked about this. Because you can't unsee the report. So you can't actually require a vote on receiving for information. So this, I believe, hits our agenda because it's through council motion. And I'm just wondering how we can turn this into more of a slot memo and then council members could ask their questions that way.
Um, so I'll have to take a look at the wording of the motion that put us here in the first place to see if it gives us the leeway to just do it as a slot memo without being presented as an agenda report. Um, if it doesn't, then it would require council motion to undo the old council motion. So yes, with respect to this item, I think that's the answer.
Perfect. Yeah, or even um a committee conversation as, as opposed to council. Either way, it's cleaner, I think.
Yeah, so it would just depend on the previous motion. I think it says it has to come to council. As part of the reporting. So because the reporting comes to a council meeting and it's presented in an agenda report, I think the way that old motion is worded, that's why we're here.
Okay.
Um, so it would require a, a motion to direct administration otherwise.
Okay, I'll work with you on that offline. Okay, go ahead. Oh, Council brought it.
Well, that raises a question for me. I mean, part of the reason why we meet in public is to present information to the public. And uh, I, how, how would you square that circle then?
Martin and I've talked a little bit about, because we receive a lot of memos that don't become public. But maybe they should. You know what I'm saying? So we, we kind of trying to figure out how. Because if you just receive it for information, then what's the point? It's not a, not a council decision. But we, that's why I said committee might be a good use of our time or making some of these memos that we receive available on our website. One way or the other.
Yeah, I if we don't get it here, how does it publicly get it? That's the question.
Committee would be the, another option.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
At the report entitled two thousand and twenty three Service Place Financial Report dated June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, we received this information.
Awesome. Oops, sorry. Was that any, any comments on that?
Yeah, I, I have a comment actually about receiving this in public. The intention of the motion was to receive it in public so that it was for full transparency on this. Because the service place finances just seem to get buried somehow with all the annual reports and the details of it. And just um making sure that we're on track and doing the best we can for reduce the deficit was necessary. So I don't care if you don't want to receive this information. I don't care if you want to approve it, but I would really like to maintain, maintain this in a public forum. Um, and recognize the importance of this. This is an enormous amount of investment, both for taxpayers and for um, for the city. Eight, over eight million dollars a year is being spent. And I, I think that taking ten minutes to discuss the finances of it is not uh too much to ask. So if we want to change a bunch of other things from information to something else, that's great. But the intention of my motion before was to make sure that it was presented in a council setting. So that way, everybody, all of council and all of the public would be able to understand and be able, and the council can ask questions accordingly in the public venue. Um, so that being said, um, I still would love to have a bit more detail in this report. And what we're getting a quarter of a page for finances is still a lot less than what we could do. Specifically explaining these variances, um, giving us a better light, not just of what could have happened, but what did happen. To explain that, we do that for the quarterly reports. We do it for other elements. And yet we're not doing it for something as major as this. So, um, I'm going to ask for, I guess, the third or fourth time now that we actually have more detail in this and take this report to the level of detail that it was intended to be when the original motion came forward. Because this is again leaving us with a lot of questions about exactly why we are where we are. And it's not about pointing fingers, it's about understanding so that we can explain to the public. And also a clear understanding of exactly why there is a deficit, whether it's better or worse, and what we're doing to improve the situation and to acknowledge the work that's been done. So in many ways, service places has almost become like a black hole as far as understanding what's going on in it. It seems to fall under one category and then also not, and also just seem to fall under that category without a lot of disclosure, but what's going on inside it. So this is really our only opportunity to have that. And I would love to actually see a report that reflected and highlighted what's been done for the year. Just like we get that from the library boards, we get it from A H F, they show us what has been done and highlights. And we don't get this anymore. And it's been almost eight years since we received a report of that magnitude. Um, and so I will take this, as you say, yes, take it as information, but it's severely lacking in what could have been provided. And I'm again going to ask that we actually provide it like several pages to explain what's going on here and a little bit more detail. To acknowledge the importance of this facility that we have in this. You know, also pride council, an idea of going forward if we're built, when we build a next facility, what we should be expecting in a much clearer detail other than just expect a deficit of two million dollars with not really understanding what the consequences are to that and why we should expect that. So with that, uh, thank you for your time.
Anyone else on, on debate? Seeing none, call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously? Okay, now we have homeland housing supports. So I have on my agenda Lori Scott presenting. There she is. Hi, Lori.
Good morning or good afternoon. On May fourteenth, the Standing Committee of the Whole passed. Sorry, excuse me.
There we go.
Good, good afternoon. On May fourteenth, the Standing Committee of the Whole passed motion I N C twenty four zero thirty seven, directing administration to prepare options for how homeland housing supports for council's consideration in quarter two, two thousand and twenty four. In September, two thousand and twenty two, council approved the transfer of the land at twenty two Saint Thomas Street to Homeland Housing for a commercial and mixed income residential development. At the May fourteenth Standing Committee of the Whole meeting, Homeland Housing identified four strategic opportunities to move the project forward. A phased development approach to increase the likelihood of receiving of affordable housing partnership. Program funding from the province through a reduced funding ask, property tax exemptions or subsidy for the units provided at eighty five percent of market rent. Relaxation of parking requirements for affordable housing projects in general and consideration of a capital grant to the maximum of two point one nine million to increase the municipal contribution percentage intended to strengthen the Alberta Affordable Housing Partnership Program app, grant application. The province has been very clear that housing is a responsibility shared by all three levels of government. The recommended motion recognizes the city's contribution of the land towards the intended development as well as additional funding in the amount of two point one nine million or twen- twelve percent of the total project value funded from the stabilization reserve, subject to the following conditions. That homeland housing provide copies of all approved funding applications, including a class B cost estimates confirming capital costs of the development to the city. That homeland housing provide confirmation to the city of the funding amounts contributed by the government of Alberta, the government of Canada and or associated funding bodies, which if received, will enable the development to proceed. And homeland housing entering into a grant funding agreement with the city on typical terms and conditions approved by the C A O. The estimated project value based on pre-development permit design, um, cost estimates is forty nine point seven million, which may change based on the ultimate design of the parcade. The total value of the city's contribution would be four point nine three million, including an increased assessed value of the land as part of the city's municipal contribution. If a phased approach is undertaken, the percentage of costs would not be equally divided between the two phases as the more expensive elements, including the parcade and commercial spaces, would be constructed within the first phase. This would mean that the city's contribution would be equivalent to twelve percent of overall project costs for whichever, for the first phase if a phased approach is, is undertaken. While the city's contribution may improve homeland housing's chances of being awarded provincial funding, there is no assurance that the provincial funding will be provided as, to enable the project to proceed as currently envisioned. If the project application timelines are extended, there's a risk that if costs increase, the city's contribution amount may not be high enough to provide the targeted twelve percent contribution. And a phased approach may incur additional expenses that are currently not accounted for. This concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Raymond Cormy, I believe, is in the, in the gallery. If there are any questions you'd like to direct to him.
Perfect. Okay, so council, we can ask questions of other Ms. Scott or Ray, Raymond Cormy from Homeland directly. Uh, and I've got Wes up first. Go ahead.
Just have me hit the button, I think, before other people. But anyway, um, so I'd like to get back to uh the, the wording of the, the motion and, and the risk you just identified. If, if the government is actually asking for twelve percent as sort of the basement level contribution on the part of a municipality, why don't we just say we're gonna give up to twelve percent rather than have a, a dollar figure? And then whatever is less uh wording. Because if it comes in less, or if we, if we, if, if, if twelve percent is more than that figure, then we're only going to give that figure of whatever it is here, uh, two point one nine. Are you going to come back for extra money then to ask for, to bump it up to the twelve percent required by the government? Or how is that going to play out?
Yeah, I, I think that's a legitimate question, Counselor, right? So um, if this, you know, assuming you approve this today, if it didn't meet the requirements, um, do we come back? And at what point in time does it meet the requirements? I don't think we know. That might be a useful question uh for our speaker as well. You know, I, I, the, the difficulties with just pegging, hey, we'll do up to this is uh really hard to track and, and secure the finances. Um, if you don't know what the ultimate end state is going to be. Not impossible, right? But it's a little messier, um, just having sort of an open-ended commitment. Um, so you know, I would offer there, there's probably a number of, of alternate considerations that, that we could have towards this.
Well, that's fine. I, 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 we just hate to see us fail or something like that to make the twelve percent, you know what I'm saying? Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Madam.
So we got, Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. Um, I guess to Mr. Cormy to begin with, um, any issues with the requirements that are, they're tacked on to this motion?
He's coming.
Thanks, Ray.
Is the mic on up there? Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so Counselor Jolly, I, I don't believe there are any concerns with the resolution. The grant applications uh are subject to a class V cost estimate. And also uh the funding sources from all levels of government, whether provincial, federal through the CMHC program or municipal. So I don't think it uh, it presents uh a significant risk uh as far as the grant application.
Thank you, apart from calling me by my last name.
That's all the questions? Okay, Counselor Bermansky.
Thank you, and my questions are for Raymond again, please. Before we run off stairs there. Uh, thank you. Thank you for coming to council today. Um, the twelve percent, was that actually an ask from the province? Or is that sort of a guess of what you, you know, you think you should contribute to sort of enhance your success with uh receiving a grant?
Right, so the, the provincial grant application uh is point scored. And so part of the criteria is kind of having that twelve to fifteen percent or greater municipal contribution, which then strengthens the application.
Okay, and what was your percentage with just the land in your original calculation?
So I, I think that it was roughly about seven, little over, well, between seven and eight percent.
Okay, and then um, do you feel confident like in the changes, like the projects kind of evolved quite a bit? You know, you know, sort of doing half a project now. And uh, do you see, or are you thinking there's going to be further, you know, costs coming up for that project as it sits right now?
So I think two things. One is that the intent of the project is it will still be a single phased development uh along Saint Thomas and Saint Anne Street. However, again, depending on the intake from the Alberta Affordable Housing Partnership Grant, so the number of proponents, we may have to go back and revisit it as a phased approach to ensure that the application is competitive. But the intent is still to move forward with a single uh, a, a single project.
Okay, and it was mentioned that there's a, you know, a lineup of seventy two people, you know, where, who knows where you sit in that, in the group for the grant applications. Um, are they, is it, was the province focusing on, more on like renovating specific facilities and adding on more so than building in what, what grant um successes you've seen?
Yeah, so the, the Alberta Affordable Housing Partnership Grant is for new build. Uh, there are different programs offered through CMHC around. Uh, there are different programs offered through CMHC around uh, renovation of rental buildings, that type of thing, but uh, the uh, the Affordable Housing Partnership Grant is focused on uh, creating new affordable housing units.
Okay, and then the uh, there was a question as well about the cost per door. I know the province wanted that to be lower than what this, you know, this project is set at. Has has there been any further discussion about, you know, lowering that by some other means?
Uh, yeah, so we we are exploring that with the architects and also with the province.
Okay. Um, that's all right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Hughes, you're up next.
Stay there, Raymond. Um, or maybe not to you, but just stay there anyway, just to save yourself some steps. Um, it might be to admit, so have we actually done a land transfer to? No, so the land transfer is still pending approvals on everything else. Is that correct? Okay, I'm seeing nods. So I was trying to figure that out, and we don't have a timeline either of like this is pending for five years, and if it doesn't happen, we'll go back and revisit, or is it just pending in perpetuity?
We do, we did enter into an agreement with Homeland Housing, um, and there are timelines in there, so I think given the 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 way that the project's going, what will happen is we'll be going and amending that agreement to kind of extend the timelines to make sure that every, like, I think the timelines were a little bit ambitious, to be honest, um, when we went turn and turned into the agreement. But so yes, there are timelines. I think we're close to them now. Um, so we will just be amending that to enable the project.
Okay, perfect. So I was just trying to figure out where we stood on this, because one of my concerns is just that ultimately it does not get the funding from the province for what multiple of reasons. We don't know what their their little brains are thinking, and that we have this land just kind of being held on hold and no other ability to use it for some other purpose, so. But that's not necessarily the case. So at some point, if it doesn't look like it's ever gonna materialize, and we can't get the cost down to where the province agrees, then we can at least do something differently with that land. We have that flexibility. Okay. Yeah, and I think we already discussed, you are trying to figure out how to get those per unit costs down. That's, I think, might be your biggest barrier right now to um, getting the approval. If if I'm not the province, but I'm just guessing.
Yeah, I I really don't have the answer to that. I think it all depends on the number of applicants to the program, uh, the type of projects they're proposing, and then, of course, what the cost per unit is.
Okay, and then just one more, just for clarification for the public. So when we have the wording of this motion, and it says two point one nine million or twelve percent total project value. So if we are doing a phased approach and it gets approved for phase one, it will, the amount that we've been contributing will be less than two point one million, we're anticipating, because the twelve percent of a phase one would be significantly less, correct? Okay, just so that the public understands, we're not doing two point one for phase one and phase two. It's two point one for all phases combined. And if it does come in less, then uh, that amount that we are committing for that project phase will also be less. One other question that I have about this then is, are we pre-committing for phase two and three as well by doing this? Or is it once the first one goes, does it expire? Like, is it first a gate motion expires? Because we have two point one nine, so we, let's say you do phase one, and let's say it's one million dollar commitment. And so does the next one point one kind of been pre-approved for phase two? Or is it just, like, are we basically committing the two point one until the entire thing's done? Or is it um, as soon as they do receive money, that we'd have to come back and revisit how much we'd be giving for the second phase and third phase?
Yep, maybe I could start, counselor, and then the experts can jump in, but I think um, the 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 money itself is approved for the entirety of the project. So how it got doled out over time would depend on on the sequencing, if in fact that was the approach taken. Um, but right now, the estimate is based on a single phase. It's all constructed. So I think we would sequence that over time if in fact the project were sequenced.
Okay, and that's right. So I guess Counselor Broadhead, just to your concerns about the twelve percent, since really their main goal is phase one of this, there's no need to increase the total amount right now. We can always worry about that after whatever twelve percent is of the final total. Um, it might work out to uh, be more the next council will probably have a discussion if they want to increase that amount for phases two and three if necessary.
Or do it now. Whatever you want.
Or do what you want, but I'm just saying, I I don't think that you're gonna have a concern at this point, because two point one is.
Let's stick it to questions for now.
Thanks.
Counselor Killick?
Uh, thank you. I I would like to just build on Counselor Broadhead's question and um, to to make sure I I I heard the comment that said it's it's low risk, but if we were to in- increase it by that eighty-five thousand dollars and get it to the twelve percent, does that get us to a kind of a a no risk compared to other proposals that the government would be looking at and evaluating? Because it, you know, my understanding, they go through a score sheet and they kind of say, well, you know, St. Albert, you're only at ten percent, but uh, X Y Z municipality did meet the twelve percent threshold. You you kind of get a checkmark on that box. And and my my question is for eighty-five thousand dollars to get it to the twelve percent of the forty-nine million estimate. Would would that not be helpful in in this overall to try and move this overall project forward? I I I must be missing something, because my my math says it would. So could could you explain that one more time for me? Lori or Raymond or?
Um, maybe I'll just.
Or just anybody that wants to take the question.
I'll 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 uh, try to answer the question, and then I look to my colleagues to to expand upon it. Um, we did put down um, uh, a limit because we wanted council to feel comfortable um, with what we're bringing forward. Um, but in all reality, the more money that the council dedicates to the project, actually it strengthens the application with the province. I just looked to my colleagues to confirm that, so that might be something you want to consider.
And and I would offer in terms of the calculus the province does, we we don't know. At the end of the day, I would offer that perhaps Mr. Cormy's got a better idea, but uh.
I'd be interested, Raymond, to hear, because again, you know, we we seem to be want to get this close, but if we really want to close the gap and be on on par with that eighty-five thousand dollar addition to to the two point two that's proposed here.
Right, so.
Give you one more piece of confidence.
Sure. So what we did when we determined the two point one nine oh is we we based it upon the uh, funding or the per unit funding that was provided, that council provided to have a chat for humanity. And so we 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 use that as the baseline to demonstrate to administration that that would move it into that twelve percent of contribution. The the reality is is that we are, as organizations, when they apply for the Affordable Housing Partnership Grant, um, you don't know what you're competing against uh, within that application process, and you don't know uh, what the provincial government priorities may be for for different areas when that application goes into play. One of the things that, you know, the province has made very clear in this program is that this is that affordable housing is a shared responsibility between the municipality, the federal government, and the provincial government. So I think, you know, that you know, probably the intent is is that all levels of government will share that responsibility somewhat equitably, right? And I would suggest that that's probably what what's being looked at uh, in those applications.
Abe, thank you.
Counselor Jolly?
Thank you. Just back to administration. I'm just wondering about the ask about reduced parking requirements. I think um, Homeland was looking for sixty percent just based on the the demand that they're seeing for other projects. Maybe that's not in the recommendation or kind of anywhere in the report that I saw.
Uh, through you, the chair, to Counselor Jolie, we are working um, closely with with the requirements in order to ensure the project's success. So we'll uh, we've asked for a parking study from Raymond uh, or Homeland Housing, and we will take those recommendations and and make make every effort to make this project work.
Okay, is that the parking study that's already done, or is that a new parking study?
The parking study has been submitted. It's under review for the travel by the Transportation Department.
Okay, so council might see a recommendation to reduce that, those those that parking requirements or like, kind of the results of that review?
I believe the recommendations are are coming through the new land use by law update. Uh, whether Mr. Cormy applies for the uh, uh, application now, it, the parking study would be the uh, guiding document, and whether he applies for it when the new land use by law is in place, then the new regulations would apply.
It also just.
So it depends when he applies?
It it depends on the level of variance, because it might not come back to council, because it would be perhaps uh, facilitated through the development process. So can't answer a hundred percent would council see it again, but um, we will, we are looking into that recommendation. We are, um, like Lori said, trying to make this development work.
Okay, and it just didn't come back today because it's kind of being dealt with through a different process, do it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mary.
And and just counsel for everybody to know, um, Mr. Fletcher has um, asked that we actually go in camera and have a quick conversation about parking? Kind of different from what you're talking about, Counselor Jolly, but we'll get to questions, and then I'm gonna ask for a motion to go on camera and just have a quick conversations about parking at this building, at this site. But let's get to Counselor Bermansky first.
Thank you. This question is for administration. Um, we, you know, we're asking questions about when the the land, you know, how long it'll be held for, and how it's not really transferred, but if you're taking two million dollars or twelve percent, if that's higher than the two million dollars set aside, you know, as a possibility for Homeland Housing, is that not affecting a lot of other projects that may be coming forward for funding? You know, we have community services. We have, you know, a small amount of the budget to divide amongst a lot of people, and that's tying up a few million dollars again. So if you could answer that, please. Counselor Bermansky, we don't really know exactly when the timing would be for the, whether that they would receive Alberta Affordable Housing Partnership Program funding. But I think if 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 it extended for a couple of years, you would have the ability to rescind the funding if it wasn't ever used. Okay, but you would have that sort of set aside in your budgeting that you wouldn't probably approve other things that would come to us then in just in case, so to speak.
Yeah, I I mean, the the money would be fenced, absolutely. It would be tied up and designated for this, so it would not be available for other things barring a a different decision from council for the timeline under the agreement. Yes, that's true.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, I see no more que- questions. Do can somebody indulge me and make a motion to go on camera? We'll have a quick conversation about parking. Thank you, Counselor Mackay. They have a motion prepared, right?
It's in the Zoom chat, and it's coming up on the screen right away.
I'm not on Zoom.
Mary, did you want me to read that?
I got it. Now we're.
It's on the screen now, thanks.
I got it. Thanks. Uh, that council moved in camera to consider a matter in accordance with section twenty-four one, A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Okay, thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that's unanimous. So I was just thinking about staying in this room, because it's just Raymond that we asked to exit for a bit, or do you want to go into the council lounge? Either way, do we still have to open up a breakout room? Pardon?
So we would open up a breakout room, but that's if you're going into the lounge.
If we stayed here, we don't need a breakout room. You just stop the Zoom or the YouTube?
Your audio is connected to the main room.
Okay.
So microphones would be in the main room. So my suggestion for confidentially would be to move into the lounge.
Okay, let's go into the lounge. You can stay here, Raymond. We won't be long. Um, okay, you can you can invite Counselor Jolly, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Grant application, right? I mean, it's it's homeland housing and this council's deciding whether to support it or not. So that their ask, I believe, was the the two point. We got asked for, so I would respectfully defer that question to Mr. Cormier.
Okay, fair enough. I'll I'll leave it at that and then we'll go from there.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, I moved that whereas Homeland Housing is developing the twenty-two Saint Thomas Street Development, quotes the development, and whereas the city has contributed two point six four five million dollars towards the development of the, in the form of a land transfer to Homeland Housing. And whereas Homeland Housing has requested additional financial support towards the development. It resolved that the city of St. Albert provide an additional funding to Homeland Housing in the amount of two point one nine million dollars or twelve percent of the total project value, whichever is less, to be funded from the stabilization reserve, subject to the following conditions. One, Homeland Housing provide copies of all approved funding applications, including the Class B cost estimates, confirming capital costs of the development to the city. And two, Homeland Housing providing confirmation to the city of funding amounts contributed by the government of Alberta, the government of Canada and/or associated funding bodies, which if received will enable the development to proceed. And three, Homeland Housing entering into a grant funding agreement with the city on typical terms and conditions approved by the Chief Administrative Officer.
I'll accept that, Council Broadhead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have been talking about the development of twenty-two Saint Thomas for some time. And we're at another step in the journey of getting this project built. I want to thank Homeland Housing and and certainly administration for working together to put together what is hopefully a successful application to bring a significant affordable housing project to our community. I think not only will it be affordable housing units and and people in our community would benefit by that, but I think it also certainly aligns with council's stated priority of bringing vibrancy to the downtown core and people bring vibrancy. And so I think on two fronts, this is a bit of a home run and I I certainly would be hopeful that the Alberta government comes forward and crosses the line with their grants requirement as well. So, Madam Mayor, I'm I'm hopeful that council is on board with this and I know that we are. The detail, of course, is always in the in the small print, but we'll cross that line when we get to it as well. So we're at this stage and I think if council approves this, we're certainly indicating to Homeland Housing and to anybody in the Alberta government who's listening that we're really on board with building this project in our community.
Counselor Brumetsky.
Thank you through the mayor to administration, Homeland Housing. I'm torn on this one simply because two million dollars on hold when we have so many asks right now for affordable housing and and land that's you know, contributed to the city that is still kind of on hold as well and and I'm not sure if the ask is, you know, kind of a gamble that the province will give us money or they won't. I guess it is, is really what we're asking for, but it's a lot of money to put on hold, you know, on behalf of the citizens who pay into Homeland Housing, who've paid you know, who sacrificed the land downtown. And so I guess I'm just saying I'm thinking about this one. So I appreciate the work that Homeland Housing is doing for sure, but it's changed a lot from the original project. The size is different. So we we haven't really considered why that's all changing and and the door cost hasn't been brought down before the ask of the extra couple million dollars. So again, just those comments, I do appreciate your work, but it's it's a lot of money to hold from other agencies. In the case of a grant from the government. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Kilik.
Counsel Jolly.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel. Yeah. Counsel Jolly, then Counsel Kilik. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm I'm happy to support this motion. Just yesterday, we were all kind of sitting in a room with residents and community leaders talking about our our budget priorities. And I think through through an accident, I was the first person to get there and right from the beginning, I was hearing that affordable housing was a priority, affordability was a priority to to the people who are our leaders in our community, to the residents of our community. So it's it's exciting to see that council priorities and where we're investing funding is is matching kind of the the needs that are are seen by people in the community. I think this is also a really exciting example of effectively regional collaboration. This project will be Homeland Housing's most southern project. And you know, it's through a board that is comprised mostly of of people in rural communities. But really, all the egos get put aside at that table and and they look at their entire kind of region of the Homeland Housing Board and look to see where the priorities are and they've they've marked St. Albert as a high priority for needing affordable housing. So the work that Raymond and his team have done on this project over the last however many years has just been outstanding. And I'm I'm really excited about kind of seeing the support, the the province support this project. I know it's a priority for them as well to to get more affordable housing in the region. So thanks, Council Broadhead, for bringing this forward.
Now, go ahead, Counsel Kilik.
I have a question on rules. I'd like to see whether I can make a friendly amendment to the
You can, yeah.
I'd like to propose that friendly amendment to the funding amount, Madam Mayor, to get it to the clean twelve percent. So I don't know what the wording or the dollar amount would have to change to, but I think it's about an eighty-five thousand dollar increase.
Can somebody quickly do the math?
I couldn't do the math because it was a percentage of a percentage. But it but it's increasing the two point one nine zero by X amount.
Can we do like a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess is fine, yeah.
Thank you.
So Mayor, you know, the the original, the the ask was the two point one nine million. By our calculations, so the the total project cost of forty-nine and change includes the land values, so twelve percent of that minus the land value. The differential between the ask and twelve percent by our calculation is about six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Counsel Kilik.
Oh, thank you, administration, for all the calculations that were going on there. There's like double and triple checked. It's a significant amount. It's certainly more than what my math did, so thank goodness we didn't trust my math. I I would like to proceed with this and see where the rest of the council sits based on the new calculation.
Okay, so let's get the number in the motion. So Counsel Kilik, yeah, amending motion that says change the number from to two six, yeah, whatever it works out to be.
That's, yeah, that's the amount we're proposing giving.
And can we get the screen available for Counsel Jolly to see on Zoom?
Cheryl puts all the motions in the chat.
Okay, the the main motion be amended to delete two million one hundred and ninety thousand and replace it with two million seven hundred ninety-three thousand. Okay, before I accept that motion, Counsel Mackay has a question.
Yeah, my question is either to administration or to Mr. Cormier. It's in relation to why the original number of two million one hundred ninety thousand was presented rather than just come right in at the floor, basement floor of
Oh, Raymond's coming.
Are you asking?
If you know Christina, you can start. Or or Lori, and then we'll get Raymond to supplement.
This was the ask from Homeland.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, but then then
Go ahead.
I think the reason for the differential was that there still is some unknown with respect to the number of parking spaces, underground parking spaces that need to be developed. So we factored that into the equation.
Thank you.
And secondly, we wanted to be cognizant of the finite resources from the city of St. Albert.
I appreciate your considerations.
Okay. You have another question? Go ahead, yeah.
Mr. Cormier, please correct me if I'm wrong, but when you, earlier in your your comments, you had referenced that the amount was based on what had been provided to Habitat for Humanity. Did I hear that correctly or?
Yeah, so we 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 base the base on on that. So the two point one nine zero was based on what was comparable for funding to Habitat for Humanity on a per unit basis.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I see no more questions. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, I had one question.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, how much do we have right now in the stabilization reserve?
It's in the back.
Is eight point eight, you said? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Eight point eight, yes.
Okay. Now I'll accept the motion. Go ahead, Counsel Kilik.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and again, thank you to administration for having calculators at the ready. The the point about bringing this up to the twelve percent. I think we've we've worked worked long and hard with Homeland Housing and administration to come forward with a good proposal. We've got a you know, a draft presentation or or plan, a building plan that looks great. We know we didn't make the first round of funding for whatever reason and and there was absolutely far too many applications for the funding available. But with this opportunity to take a second opportunity at at the funding that is is going to be available in round two. I would like to make sure through this increase in the budget that we stand absolutely the best chance. Nothing is guaranteed, I understand that. But by increasing it and making it a clean number that gets us to the twelve percent as specified by the government, it gives us the best chance. And I know it's, again, to- total is a lot of money and and I don't dispute that by any means. But this, again, incremental amount really does get us closer to having that checkmark in the twelve percent funding box. I would hate for us to go through all this work again with both Homeland Housing and administration working together and and have our application not even make the shortlist because of six hundred thousand dollars. Especially when you divide it out by the number of affordable units that are being provided. This this is just gets us one step closer. The the other reason as well is when I heard that it was benchmarked against the Habitat for Humanity asked, I appreciate that Mr. Cormier heard that and and took that into consideration and took into consideration affordability from you know, what was provided to other organizations. But this is, this has got significantly larger benefits to the community, to the downtown. And all of the other things that we've been been working hard on. So I I would like to see that this is is brought forward and and gives us the best chance possible when dealing with the government. And competing against all the other municipalities that are going to have their ass in for this round two. So I hope council is supportive of of this.
Counsel Brumetsky.
Thank you. And Counsel Kilik, I will not be supporting this one. If someone came to me and said, could I borrow twenty dollars, I wouldn't say, here, have thirty. And the the trouble is here, we're we're going into our, you know, our our stability, our savings and when we're putting out the message that, you know, I I'm sure that, you know, Homeland Housing did their calculations and they came to us for an ask and and now we're saying that, you know, here's more, like, we have a lot of money in, you know, to give away. Right now, St. Albert is struggling. We have a very, very tight budget. We have so many committees coming to us, so many people that need money, so many housing projects. So many things that we have on the go and we're pulling from our reserve funding and saying, here, take more money out of our our reserve funding. I think we have to be cognizant of 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 saying no sometimes, or we can't afford it sometimes. If we're constantly saying, here, you know, we have more to give when we realistically don't have more to give and it will be taken from another area is 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 really difficult. And I mean, I wish we had funding for everything that's coming to us, but we know a lot of the committees in the community are saying to us, they don't have enough. We have more people that are going to be coming to us for asks. And, you know, as as was mentioned, the community was surprised that eighty-two percent of our budget is already, you know, taken just for you know, services and managing the city and eighteen percent were juggling for whatever. So I don't, you know, I I know the community needs affordable housing and I know there's housing projects that need fixing. There's just so so many projects and if we had, you know, the money for all of them in a perfect world, that would be great, but to say, here, take more of taxpayers' money, which really isn't our money to, you know, I mean, it's taxpayers' money at the end of the day. And, you know, there's been many, the land, you know, was actually owned by taxpayers essentially as well and and everyone pays into Homeland Housing. They do great work. I, you know, I don't have any question there. It's just that we're we're tying up funds for a guess and we don't even know what that guess is. And, you know, Homeland gave us a educated guess, a planning guess and whatever, and now we're changing it to a bigger guess, which I I certainly don't see the need for. I, you know, I wish the project was successful. I wish it was already approved. You know, and also, you know, when you're saying we do have this money, maybe the province will expect us to contribute more because we're saying we have money, but we don't have the money. That's the point, right? Unless we're pulling away from something else. So again, a very, very difficult decision, but in this particular case where you've where it's been added on to the ask, I just, I I can't feel comfortable supporting it. Thank you.
Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Here's the, here's the problem, is that we're taking this in the stabilization reserve. This is supposed to be for emergencies. This is not an emergency. This is an ask that came forward and the increase to to two point eight million means that one-third of the stabilization reserve as of today will be depleted. We're tied up. And it's going to be tied up for years. So it literally ties your hands for other opportunities or other situations that come up. And we had, what, in the past couple of years, we had the stabilization reserve go to nothing and then come back up again. So the idea that we have this money and will always have more than enough money is very short sighted. So we've already experienced it going down substantially with other commitments that happened and then came back up again. So committing another six hundred thousand dollars into a fund towards a project that is not an emergency and taking it out of our emergency fund. When it's not even being asked for by the person who's, the organizations that's actually applying for this grant is not financial prudence, simple as that. We should be saving this money for actual emergencies that come up. A fire truck can blow up, all sorts of things can happen, and all of a sudden we're two point some million dollars having to pay for that in the last minute. Like, there's all sorts of things that can come up and none of them are cheap. So I can't support going for another two, six hundred thousand when there was never even an ask for the six hundred thousand. And we are doing this at the hope that other something else will not come up while this is tied up for years. Once this goes forward, we don't, we can't change it to a lesser amount halfway through this process. So then it's like, if the money's not there, it's not there. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Broadhead.
A in interesting motion and and certainly I don't want to lose this grant for six hundred thousand dollars. There would be many in our community that say the affordable housing situation is indeed an emergency. It it's interesting in light of the conversations that we're having around the opportunities further on down the line in terms of dealing with the with Homeland Housing. But in the end, to me, this this shows our determination to bring this project to our community. And like I said, I didn't want to get into a bidding war, and I don't think this is what's happening. I think what we're what we're saying here in this motion is if the government is expecting twelve percent, then we are going to contribute twelve percent. I think that's what we're saying. Thank you.
Uh, I see no more members of council wanting to weigh in. Ballsy and bold move, Counsel Kilik. I think because the motion overall says, and it's the second piece, that Homeland Housing provide confirmation to the city that funding amounts contributed by the government, Alberta Government of Canada. So if we don't get that, then we don't have to worry about spending our contribution. And as both you and Counsel Broadhead said, if the six hundred thousand dollars does make the difference, then I would gladly put the six hundred thousand in. So I think it's about time that the city did really make a strong commitment towards housing. We did with the Habitat motion. We did with the donation of the land, but the land didn't really affect the tax base of our future projects. So I'm going to see where this goes, but you have my support. Anything to close?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council were at FCM in Calgary and the the reoccurring theme was that affordable housing across the country is an issue. And and a grave issue that everybody is facing. We have the opportunity here today to to make a decision that is going to potentially get us a little bit closer to addressing that in in our own community. As Counselor Broadhead said, this is an emergency. Affordable housing for someone who doesn't have a house is an emergency. And if we can uh, help to get this proposal and funding approved for Mr. Cormery to take it forward to the government and stand even a one percent chance of being more successful than having a simple no, you didn't meet the twelve percent threshold. I think this is a good investment. There there is no risk. Uh, if the government says, no, your proposal doesn't meet other criteria. The money doesn't get spent. To me, this is a good, and I know it's above what they asked for, but I also know it is, gets it closer to what the government set out as a as original criteria. So I think this is a good risk to take at an additional six hundred thousand dollars. And it does truly address an emergency that we have right now. And I hope council supports it.
All right, oh. Mr. Fletcher, before we vote, you have more information.
Can you let us do the math once more? Well, it's it's about a fifty thousand dollar difference is what we're coming up with.
Okay, let's.
Thank you.
Would it be easier just to say twelve percent of the project in the motion? Yeah.
You you could do that. It's a difference between um, two point seven and nine three and two point eight. Four.
Okay. Is it just easier and probably cleaner? It it actually gives. The intent, the government.
That would be fine, and then we but the intent as of right, the current the current application, so it doesn't escalate over time.
That that would meet my intent.
Okay, I apologize for the late introduction.
No, that's okay.
Make sure.
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
About, I mean, that's. On the value of forty-nine million. What happens if that man goes up?
Well, I I think that would, we would, I would recommend putting in the motion um, twelve percent based on the that particular value, I guess. The the government of Alberta will consider this in the next couple of months, so we're not particularly concerned about cost escalation. If this were a year from now, it would be a different number. That would be and that. We get caught in that sort of ever increasing.
So Miss Caulfield, um, twelve percent. Based on. Cost estimations in today's report. Something like that.
So what we're talking about, just so I'm clear, is amending the main motion to take out the. Number that says a certain amount and just saying twelve percent of the total project value. Is that correct?
Based on today's cost estimates.
Based, yes, we can.
Work on that. Okay.
Okay.
I'll let you start, but I'm hearing some chatter.
But I I. Twelve percent of fifty million is. Three point two million.
It it actually works out if you. To about five million and change, um, but then you take off the land costs, um, right, which is already a contribution of two point. Eight million dollars, more or less, if you include the escalation. And so that's.
Okay, and councillor Killick, are you happy with that?
Well, wouldn't you just vote on this one and point of order? Wouldn't you just defeat this one and then? Have another one come forward?
This is still an amending motion. Right?
I just seeking legislation's help because this is getting muddy.
I I apologize to drive this. You can give us two more minutes.
Two more minutes, okay.
So the and just so we're the at the amending motion. Mayor accept the amending motion already? Did? You did, so yeah.
I did, we debated it, yeah.
We debated it, so we would have to vote on it and then do another amending motion. Which would. Change the intent slightly because technically it's on the floor, yeah.
So we can vote on the current amending motion that says. Change it to two million seven hundred ninety-three.
That's right, okay.
Just wait.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yep. What's saying it's more, isn't it? I think it's more. Like he said, two point eight something. Everybody's got their calculators out.
So we we have a a confluence of. The the math minds, it's uh, the the total is two. Eight, five, four. Two, eight, four, four and change, so it is that extra fifty thousand dollars and.
Thousand?
Five zero essentially.
Okay. Just taking up my options in my head here because I've accepted the motion, council owns it. You don't have the authority to just change it, although. It's too bad because your intent was not met. So why don't we vote on the. Current number? And if we want to make another amendment of adding. That in. To make it twelve. Then we can. Does that work? Does that work over here? Councillor Jolly, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm still gonna vote in favor in case the next one fails.
I know what you're saying. Okay, all right. So I'd already called for the vote. We're not changing anything. The new number would be two million seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, just so everyone's clear. Nothing has changed at this point. Two point seven. This is an amending motion to the original motion. Call for the vote. Voting is closed and that motion passes with councillor Vermontsky, Hughes and Mackay against. Okay, we're not at the twelve percent threshold. Does anyone, doesn't have to be you councillor Killick, want to make it the exact twelve percent?
Sorry, Mayor, that passed.
Did I say failed?
It passed.
Yeah, sorry, it passed. I meant to say passed, and then I said who opposed it, and there was only three people. Sorry, it passed with councillor Vermontsky, Hughes and Mackay opposed. So. Thank you. Sorry, I misspoke. Councillor Killick?
So question.
Councillor Jolly.
Does that get us to the twelve percent?
We're fifty thousand shy.
I I can make another uh amendment to put it to whatever number that was just calculated.
Yeah. Or you could just use the twelve percent, whatever.
I I like the the concrete number.
Okay, councillor Hughes does too.
Yeah.
So exact same motion, but changing to seven, nine, three to whatever the new number is. It's another amending.
Yes, we have that. We're just getting it up.
Two, eight, four, five is the number.
It would be two, eight, four, five, zero, zero.
It's up there.
Okay, councillor Jolly, there's the motion.
Okay, I can't see it, but I heard two, eight, four, five.
Yes, correct.
Oh. Okay, so that the main motion be further amended to delete uh, two million seven hundred ninety-three thousand and replace it with two million eight hundred and forty-five thousand.
Perfect. Okay, anything to add to that?
No.
And absolutely councillor Mackay, go ahead.
Uh, sorry to belabor this, so I I just need to. I need to see the work. I need to see the math. I mean, I just.
Yeah, then I could show you my, so bottom line is we've got the the total cost estimate as related in the AR. We removed the the land cost from that because that was inclusive of land, so we're talking about twelve percent of the project cost. Um, from that, that gives us five million dollars and change is the uh, the the twelve percent of forty-seven million uh, dollars. Um, then from that, we subtracted. The land value, so um, which is the two point six plus the one point five, I'm rounding up. Um, essentially that the the.
Assess.
Assessment increase, um, and that equals the delta of two point eight or or. Two point, sorry, uh, that number there, two, eight, four, five, zero, zero is the delta between those two things.
So total cost.
And that's been done by five different people along.
So total cost.
Total cost minus the value of the land, so it's it's actually the construction cost.
Twice?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Mr Cormier, do you?
I think that's where people are getting confused.
My mayor, Madam Mayor, Mr Cormier is at the mic.
Yeah, oh, do you have something to add? Or no?
Oh.
He's just waiting to see the numbers.
Wait, um, oh.
But I'm just trying to figure where they, so why are we minusing the land twice?
So the total value of the project as far as homeland housing is concerned is the the forty-nine million. That includes the land cost, which costs them actually nothing. Um.
Okay.
Right? Because it's function cost. So if you wanted to use the the forty-nine million as the baseline, then we're talking over three million dollars.
Okay. Okay, is that you got your question answered?
Ye- yes.
And so perhaps Mister Cormier can say what. Value that that ultimately should be in terms of the ability to sell it to the province, but. From Saint Albert's perspective, the project costs are not inclusive of the land, but I I defer to homeland housing to determine how they manage that.
Yeah, because I mean, does, I guess it's how, so how does the province score it? I mean, would they take? The contribute, would they take our contribution one time, or did they just take it over your entire amount that you're submitting? Because you're submitting the forty-nine, seven, something to the um, AM.
So the land value has to has to be declared in the grant application, whether for the province or this or the federal government. They treat that as cash or as an asset or as equity. And then what happens is they subtract it from the project development. So the cost to build the project, it's now subtracted, right? And that's how, that's why you you double subtract it as it was just explained.
So you think their number is correct?
I I believe the number is correct.
Okay, okay. All right. So councillor Jolly is making a further amendment. She has no opening comments. You're done with questions. Anyone else with comments? Oh, councillor. No, is this comments or questions councillor Mackay? Okay, good. Councillor Mackay, you're good? Is your name still on my?
No, you can remove my name. Being good is a relative term.
Yeah. Councillor Killick.
Uh. Thank you, administration, for crunching the numbers uh, and getting us. To a a a correct number. Um, I think. It is important. Uh, from a transparency point of view and just. The complexity that we went through here today on the twelve percent. Wh- what is the real number? Um, we we have to. I like the fact that we have both in there. Um. Because it it's. Transparent to the public. Uh, it is also a number that comes out of our reserve fund. So. Without without an actual number being in the motion as amended by councillor Jolly here. Uh, we would be vague on those two terms and uh. We talked about. Where the money is coming from out of stabilization reserve. So it's nice to have a nice, clean. Dollar number and uh, for the for that reason, I'm. Uh, supportive of it, just as opposed to just saying twelve percent. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on debate? I'm seeing not anything to close councillor Jolly?
Nope.
All for the vote. Voting's closed and that motion passes. I'll make sure I get my language correct with councillor Vermontsky, Hughes and Mackay opposed. Back to the main motion now, and there's three of them. And you read it in councillor Broadhead, right?
I did, Madam Mayor.
And we had gone through most of the debates, but then councillor um. Killick made the amendment kind of halfway through, which was fine. Uh, so I'm just gonna open it up. For you, if you have any further opening comments?
I'll I'll save my comment for.
Councillor Hughes.
Yeah.
Coming to you.
Uh, thank you. I'm probably just talking to the wind right now because it's gonna probably be a four, three um, at best. Uh, but. To say that this project is an emergency, uh, does not actually pay respect to actual emergencies that can happen to the city. Where it's imminent that we spend the money absolutely now, and we just increased it by six hundred fifty thousand dollars, and I have no idea how two point eight million looks like chump change all of a sudden. Saying that we're supporting something because. For two point eight million dollars. And the challenge I have on top of the fact that this number has increased to now depleting a third of our stabilization reserve. Is that when this entire project came forward and we asked for ROIs, it was with the expectation and condition that the sole. Contribution from the city would be this land. That was what was brought forward to the council at the day was. We'll put for this land and we'll be for affordable housing and we'll get proposals and you will do it without additional assistance from the city. And it is now somehow morphed from that to giving almost three million dollars towards this. And I understand that there's been statements said like, oh, well, if it doesn't happen, we don't have to give the money. That money is still being tied up. It's unavailable for other projects if it's necessary. For all intents and purposes, it's gone until it's decided otherwise. Which means that for years, this money is unavailable. The emergency fund is not available. It's gone. Assume it's spent because it is until it's told otherwise. So. I had a challenge at two point two, at two point eight. I realize this is probably gonna pass on at least a four vote, but. I have no idea how we thought that two point eight million is somehow just negligible amounts of funding from the city. We're paying forty-three thousand dollars on top of land value now for each unit. And we're doing this to say, so we have sixty-five units. We could give that money to the housing society and we can get thirty units right now. Without having to go through all these other expenditures if we so chose. And yet we're moving this forward. And ignoring the fact that, please do never insult me by saying that a housing project is an emergency. This is supposed to be one time unforeseeable events are supposed to happen, and that's why we have that money set aside. And at this point. Put that kind of money in there and really not fulfilling the obligations of what we had the intention of doing, which was land only donation. Not land only plus millions. Donation. And I just, I have a hard time coming to terms, the idea that that's what we're gonna be doing in just seconds from now. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, anything on closing?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your comments, uh, councillor Hughes, uh. I would say welcome to the new world of provincial politics, downloading their responsibilities, municipalities, housing was in their. Was in their responsibility. Now they want to share it. And that's fair enough. Um, but that's the reality we're dealing with now. If we want. Affordable housing within our community, uh, we have to jump to the pump. And uh. Not sure I like it, but that's the reality of of creating uh, an affordable housing project. And getting grant funding that'll actually make it happen, so. Uh, I'm hoping this passes. I think uh. As I said earlier, it's gonna. It'll be a well-needed project to our community and it'll bring uh, vitality to our downtown, so.
All right, call for the vote. That most good motion passes with councillor Vermontsky and Hughes opposed. Quick follow-up with. You, Mister Fletcher, and and you, Mister Cormier. I think this is pretty significant. And I don't want to leave it in just the hands of homeland to. Show the province what Saint Albert's done, so can we work on a letter? To our MLAs and Minister Nixon and just say that the the city stepped up in this way. So, and whatever you need, Raymond.
Yeah, no, I think I think that's a. A great recommendation, Madam Mayor. I think that um, we definitely. Do need to bring. To the forefront, uh, the issues around affordable housing, especially for Saint Albert. And I think by showing. The city's commitment. Plus the ongoing need to our provincial politics is uh, is uh, sound thinking.
Okay, all right, we'll we'll work together on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We. Are almost finished this meeting. There's a couple. There was one more that was on consent. Where is it? Excuse me. And that was the transit bus funding. The motion that passed was that the budget for municipal repair maintenance. Uh, RMR capital charter transit, was there one transit bus lifecycle replacement for two thousand twenty-six? It was twenty-five that we voted on last time, but this is twenty-six. Be increased by nine hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred for a total budget of nine million two hundred thirty thousand three hundred be funded from the transit lifecycle reserve. With goods and our services not to be received until after January first, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, we had no emergent items. It's it is update day two, council, so um. We'll go to updates and then I know there's a few notices of motions to read in, so. So who wants to start with updates? I always kind of pick. Counselor Killig seems ready. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick update from Edmonton Salutes. Uh, meeting was May twenty fourth, uh, almost a month ago. Uh, it was held face to face. Uh, and thank you to the um Strathcona for hosting it and being sponsored by Counselor Katie Bogenhofer uh or Berthofer, sorry. Um, I always struggle with that one. And uh, we reviewed our regular committee updates. Uh, uh, had a big discussion around uh many municipal uh surrounding municipalities that are members of Edmonton Salutes. We're looking at painting poppy on crosswalks and that was soundly uh defeated as as disrespectful to our veterans of walking on on poppies. Um, and we also had a quick update that the King Charles the Third Coronation Medal um process has been launched or was launched um uh, May sixth uh until September sixth. So I think that again is administered through our provincial government. There were a federal government and our MLAs, our MPs, oh my gosh. And um will trickle down to us. Thank thank you to my sidekick here correcting the language. Anyway, good, good news on that. Um, Mayor Heron and I will be attending the change of command on the twenty seventh, uh, this coming Thursday. Uh, Brigadier General Graham outgoing uh transferring command to Brigadier General Rutland. Uh, so that's on the twenty seventh. And uh, we do have a meeting uh to review our standard bylaws and uh membership subcommittee. Uh, that meeting is on Thursday, so I won't be able to attend, but I've advised Edmondson Salutes of that. And our next meeting is on the uh upcoming on the twenty eighth. In terms of CSAC, uh, last month, we uh had membership attend uh an open invite to neutral grounds, St. Albert Prement Society and Stop Abuse in Families, uh, which were excellent to gain kind of more casual insight as to what they do and the great services they support, uh, provide support to our community. And we have an upcoming one on the nineteenth, uh, a tour of members, um, CSAC membership to the Family Resource Center. They said on the nineteenth, so uh, that's about it.
Right, Counselor McKay.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, last Tuesday, we had our policing committee. Um, just can report that uh our staffing levels uh are promising to improve. I mean, we certainly have uh some interest in backfilling some of our vacancies. And the detachment commander is moving forward along with um placements to uh to fill our vacancies. Uh, lots of discussion. Uh, we've got two sites uh dates for the farmers market, so we'll continue our community engagement uh at the farmers markets. Um, I think one dates in July and one dates in September. Um, I continue to be extraordinarily busy with my Arrow Utilities responsibilities. Um, we've met multiple times. I'm met in my role. I'm also on a number of subcommittees, so we continue to meet uh regularly. I can't remember if I brought it up at the last one. We did host the CAOs out at River Creek and had some pretty good, robust discussions as as it relates to uh uh where Arrow Utilities uh is in relation to uh some of the changes I've brought forward before in relation to this kind of structure, personnel and how we are trying to engage with communities. One of those is the introduction of a new community um kind of awareness program. Uh, instead of you'll probably be seeing it very shortly. Um, our communications people within Arrow Utilities is working with all of the communications um staff within all the municipalities and you'll see a kind of a slick rollout and I won't spoil it as to what that is. Um, and uh, so I'm trying to think if there was anything else as it related to that. Um, no. So uh, we haven't earned our internal audit committee hasn't met. And uh, yeah, I think that's all for right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Counselor Hughes.
My seniors committee hasn't met, audit committee hasn't met, and uh waste minimization is next week.
Awesome. Counselor Broadhead.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, my committee didn't meet either since the last update, so.
Okay. And Counselor Bromansky?
Okay, so Arts Committee was a little bit shorter one um in May, but um we we discussed again, the the call for artists for the banners downtown has been put forward. So anyone in the community that's interested in, you know, putting their name forward for that could be an exciting art challenge for you. So that's put forward. Uh, we went over the success of the Children's Fest again, which um, you know, has, you know, I want to commend everybody involved in that again this year for that. Um, the Fowler Park is just around the corner, so the grand opening of that will be um coming up here soon. We also uh found out, which I didn't know prior, there's tea and bannock days at the library on.
Oh, yeah, those are fun.
So we just, we just reinforced that to get people out to that. And then there's there, if um online, they're actually providing more information for the arts and what's going on in the city because there's so many more things going on in the art gallery and new projects and whatever. So I encourage the public to follow up on those and support those. Um, I want to commend the, you know, the Heritage Group at the Green Elevators on Father's Day weekend here. They had a great event for the public. So some of this is a little bit old news because it happened a couple of days ago, but um you know, it was, it's just a matter of thanking the people for doing all that. And so there was lots going on in St. Albert on on Father's Day weekend. And so that was about it for the children's. On the environmental committee, we had a a large uh presentation from staff and um those involved on um waste diversion in in St. Albert. And so we learned many, many things at at that one. I have some pretty exciting data here on um uh, one forty yard bin of scrap metal collected, uh, seven hundred and seventy three metric tons of leaves, uh, fifty four metric tons of appliances. Compost Depot is doing really, really well uh with the glass pickup shut down there for a couple of days. There was issues, but that's still carrying on. It was uh put forward that people should be uh cutting their lawns at that four inch level, keeping them a little bit longer to, you know, maintain a little bit of wa- uh more water hold in there and encouraging mulching. Um, we talked about the extended producer responsibility that will be coming forward, so that will change some of the programs in St. Albert, having the producers of those things like styrofoam and all the waste that we normally have to deal with that they'll have to deal with. So that was good news there. Um, another thing that was mentioned that um I didn't mention prior, it was in my last update, but the invasive plant um uh, you can go to the St. Al- City of St. Albert website and see a visual of invasive plants in St. Albert because a lot of people are not really aware of some of the things, you know, that could be an invasive plant uh in the city. For example, baby's breath or there is certain plants that maybe at a um, you know, being sold at a store that people aren't aware that they can take over a whole neighborhood. And it was interesting in how they described it, the pattern. You can actually see the yard that they start at and then they blow to the next yard and and so on. So that was, you know.
Did you say baby's breath?
Yeah, yeah.
I did not know that.
Yeah, so there was some really interesting flowers there that, you know, in the store, they're beautiful and you plant them, but you don't know what havoc you're causing in the community afterwards. The other thing was that the uh bins tend to get contaminated in the winter months because people get, I guess, impatient with less garbage bins and throw things in there that shouldn't be in there and then that affects and contaminates a whole bunch of things. So try not to contaminate your bins is is the focus we went on. And uh sod, still remember sod doesn't belong in there as well in the green bin. So that was um reinforced as well. Um, let's see here. I think that was about that. Oh, and the water, water conservation is still a focus in all my committees essentially and water. If you're in the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance or the Sturgeon or you're in the communities, uh, everyone's trying to figure out the best way to manage water usage and um, you know, and maintain water. We had lots of water in my area this year, too much water, I guess. So we'll see what happens in the future. So that was the environmental. And then we had um the, I had the Sturgeon Watershed Alliance Committee. And they are working on a um uh, a new strategic um, a surgeon watershed management plan. So again, in that group, it's always interesting because we're working with people from all different areas. There can be rural, there can be um you know, just outside of the city, the farming. And um, so a lot of them are working on salt management. Uh, that's through the government of Alberta. Um, water conservation, conservation bylaws, drought management. Uh, we're one of the communities actually that has a conservation bylaw and many of them really don't, you know, like we have our you know, your watering times and such. So we're ahead of it there. We we have the really um, you know, a good, the administration did suggest, you know, that uh a solid work pa- plan and strategic planning session is required for moving ahead with the um watershed management plan because the thing is with that plan, it's so many entities that are all trying to work out that plan together and contribute the best success for everyone. So it'll be a big plan, but um lots of good things going on there. The rain barrel program was, you know, extremely successful here in St. Albert. So I I mentioned that out to the group. A lot of people are envious of our our plans with the water rain barrels. And uh, some of the garden things that we have, the community gardens that we have going on in St. Albert and these people having these containers and they're all hooked together. And I mean, it's just it's just amazing what the people in our community contribute to uh, the water, the growing, the river, and everyone cares. So just don't contaminate those bins. That was the end of that.
Good report. Thanks. Counselor Jolly.
Yeah, we had Youth Advisory Committee at the beginning of the month. Um, the big presentation was from our rec group about a survey that's going to be coming out. Uh, I think first week in July about possibly adding some fun stuff to Fountain Park Pool. Um, so that was a really interesting discussion and they, you know, right out of the gate, they asked, well, well, how does, how much does all this stuff cost? And and that's not part of the survey, wasn't part of the presentation. So um, you know, it was really neat seeing seeing that group ask those questions and kind of led into a discussion about the difference between operating and capital budgets and kind of the impacts that has uh on the community. So really good discussion. Uh, Homeland Housing is next week, I think. Um, so that will be coming up soon.
All right. Thanks for that. Now I have, I know for sure um a notice of motion from you, Counselor Jolly. So while you're up, go ahead.
Yeah, it is. Oh, I had it open and then I closed it. Hold on. Thank you, Marta. Um, so that administration offers space for nominal value at a year-round city-owned facility to the St. Albert Assisted Independent Living Home Foundation Sale Home with the option for a seasonal facility preferred by sale home for the purpose of operating a food service establishment which complies with provincial regulation and operates within the city's hours of service and that sale home be exempt from the community capital grant application timeline requirements in order to enable sale home to apply for grant funding for this food service establishment on an as-needed basis.
Okay, thank you for that. I know Counselor Killig has one and Counselor Broadhead, you have an IR, right? Two. Okay, go ahead. Well, I'll start with you, Mike, because it's a notice of motion.
Uh, yes, thank you. That uh special event criteria be added to the prior prioritization factors to inform priorities of response and appropriate methodology of repair, maintenance or replacement in the city's asset management programs.
Awesome. Okay, uh, you had an IR about transit, I think, Counselor Broadhead, and another one. Remember, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, transit and uh Mike Mitchell. So I'll read the them. So uh, information request within the last twenty four months. Have there been incidents of harassment, intimidation or physical assault by members of the public on employees of the city of St. Albert who work at Mike Mitchell Recycle Center? If so, please provide any relevant statistics, including number of incidents, injuries or lost time. Secondly, what safety measures are present at the Mike Mitchell Recycle Center to provide a safe working environment for specific employees? Third, what are the standard managerial response and investigative procedures when an event of harassment, intimidation or physical assault is reported by an employee working at the Mike Mitchell Recycle Center? Finally, what training instruction or direction is given to employees of the Mike Mitchell Recycle Center when they are confronted by different, difficult or dangerous members of the public? And uh, the other one? Public transit bus schedule? What factors are considered when creating a public transit bus scheduled to service schools within St. Albert? Are the school's start time, finish times a consideration when creating a bus schedule? And are there opportunities for schools to adjust class start and finish times to facilitate student use of public transit? If so, has this occurred in St. Albert?
All right, that's good. Um, Counselor Hughes, you have your button pushed?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge to our CIO that he just passed his two-year anniversary with us. So he's now now departed from R key status to a full-blown official CIO and congratulations.
Thank you for that. And Counselor um Killig, have something else?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to um mention that Cheryl Dumont, who we all know and love, has uh officially announced her retirement for the third time um from her role on further education. She's been the uh chair there since twenty seventeen. Um, seven years of absolute terrific service to the community in in teaching uh many newcomers, second language, basic math skills, uh, adults, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, further education has just been a a real cornerstone of of our community service activities. And Cheryl, again, retiring after seven years of of community service uh is is pretty spectacular. Um, the number of people she has helped uh directly. Um, and finally has uh found someone uh able to to take over and make sure that that continues to that great organization continues to go forward and serve the residents of St. Albert is uh is fantastic and we we wish Cheryl all the best in in her retirement.
Thank you for that. Um, that's it. So that.
Here, uh, sorry.
And go ahead.
Am I able to just ask a quick question about Counselor Broadhead's um IR?
Sure. Mike Mitchell, the transit?
Yeah, the Mike Mitchell one. Counselor Broadhead, did something happen that I don't know about that that prompted that?
Is that it in camera?
If it's in camera, that's fine. I have a follow-up question that's for sure not in camera.
I I assumed there was a reason for that.
Someone came up to me and and uh and we chatted about it.
Okay. And I guess a follow-up question to that um is why is the IR limited to Mike Mitchell? I know, I think all of us have seen the the video at St. Albert Place. Um are you limiting to Mike Mitchell for any particular reason or kind of are you thinking more just across the city? How are our staff prepared for for that kind of violence?
Well, I I guess the reason why I say I focused on Mike Mitchell is is that uh they're out there by themselves for one thing. And um yeah. So that and and the incident that came to my attention was at that uh uh facility. So that's why I spoke to it. Now, I'm hoping that uh whatever is said about uh, you know, staff training and all those things are are uh, you know, corporation-wide. But uh, anyway, that's why I focused on Mike Mitchell.
No, that that's fair. And I think I think it's a good IR. Would you be willing to amend it a little bit just to to stretch it out to um staff and contractors who work alone anywhere in the city?
Sure. Yeah, no, that's that's a, that's a great amendment.
Okay. Thank you. I staff, I admit, I don't know what you need in terms of doing that, but.
We're going camera right away.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I, speaking of that, can I have a motion to go in camera? Counselor Jolly, how about you?
That um, the council moving camera to have a confidential dialogue with the CIO pursuant to section twenty one, twenty twenty four, one A of FOIP.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. You pass me the host or co-host because we will not be coming back. You guys can go home.